We've already consulted with those that are here on council and our attorney and manager that we need to reach him. For any consultation, we can call the body of technology and put him on speakerphone. But I think we'll be successful. Having said that, for the audience, we have no motions that we're going to vote on today. We come together in this workshop or work session, as we call it, to work out details, talk about things, but no decisions will be made on anything today. So I trust my faithful attorney and manager will guide me through the rest of this afternoon. So as we do that, we have our agenda here. And where should we start here? We do have those that would like to speak this afternoon. You know we do that now or we do that later? Right now, sir? We can do it now? Okay. Well, which do we have now? I think we have Jackie Brown, Madison Street, tree and zoning. Tree and zoning. Would like to come before us. I think we have a three-minute limit and they even try to make the council stick to the three minutes also. So when I actually come at this time, it is concerning the tree and zoning. Yes.
Thank you. Hopefully it won't take me that long.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to bring your copy up on what I'm going to need to... Jackie. Thank you for your time. I'll let you do it.
Okay, we should. Okay, we should. Take out the...
Oh, you should. All right. Yeah. Thank you guys for the time. I stand for you to bring up an issue that I have. I own a property that's on Lot 5, Lot 7, and as you can see, there's an encroachment on from the other property onto my property. And there's a big tree in the right-of-way. And the guys went out there to clean it. And the tree roots are around the concrete. And they were fearful of moving the concrete in case they... And they had a tree. So I'm coming before the city council and see if there's any help they can offer me in getting that taken care of because it's a safety issue for me. The other issue that I have was to see if they could clear up the alley behind that lot for the reselling, if possible.
Okay. Kind of help us out as council, if you can remind Jackie, right here. I know you have more than one piece of property. You and your family should put it out here as above where this is at.
Okay. Madison Street sits behind the art center here. First African historical Baptist church sits here. It's directly on the side of First African Baptist Church. So it's just next block over.
Can you say it's a sidewalk or...?
No, it's just a big piece of concrete.
Okay.
They cleared the lot, but there's a concrete that encroached from the other property. And when they went to clear it, they noticed that the roots were around the concrete and they were fearful of removing the concrete because they said it might kill the tree. So I'm here to see if the city council would have any suggestions or how to...
And that's close to the flower shop?
Right.
Okay. And...
It's right beside Richard.
Right.
Where Richard lives, right beside there.
Right.
So that lot is clear.
Okay. Well, I think what we can do right now, we're going to defer to the manager because it looks like it's a not-so-much zoning, but that's something we can look at. And we've been successful in the past with things like this. And I know exactly what it's that. I wanted to make sure, and I've seen the lot just beautiful. We played it out real good. And so having said that...
If y'all will look right here. Y'all will look right here. I think they kind of cleared it up a little bit more. You can read right here. It sits in the back of your book, so plenty of time. If you look at your... This page right here.
Okay, go ahead.
Go all the way to the back and read what the planning zoning, I think, is recommending to the city council. Right there, okay?
And that's a rezoning request.
Right here. To the yellow paint over.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right there, right there. Let's move in here.
And that's a rezoning request.
Yes, sir. If we look at that, that's what planning zoning think of us and recommend it.
Management owns, recommending, approving the rezoning from R1 to C2. They recommended approval. They had a hearing conducted, a hearing with her. Votes unanimously recommended the council to adopt the changes.
I'll give you some data on the tree.
Yeah, I'll try it out when we start on the tree. I think, you know, we could probably place it on the agenda tomorrow night if you want to get approved of the zoning.
Right. The issue was, they were asking me about parking and driveways and how the customers was getting in and getting out. And, you know, that portion out there, there's a large chunk there where it sits up, the concrete sits up. So it would be a hazard for anybody, you know, a safety hazard. So that's why we're trying to get it moved. But when the guy came out and do it, he was fearful, he said, because if he took it, concrete happened, it would probably kill the tree.
What happened, council, is I'm getting it now, is the planning zoning did vote to rezonate this particular piece of property. It was unanimous. It comes back automatically, kicks back to the council for the council to approve. So that's all on the cheap. The tree is a whole different matter as opposed to zoning. So I've not seen it, I don't know anything about it, and I've got nothing to say about it until I see it.
There's three, it seems like, there's three issues. The zoning, there's a tree, and then you brought up the alley.
Right.
What do we, what are we asking? I got the tree part, I got the zoning part, but what are we asking about the alley?
Just clean out the alley because I'm asking that you do so. Well, they told me to present it here, so, I mean, I spoke to the guy that carried the lot, he told me to just come. He didn't want to remove the concrete because he was fearful, so he told me to come here and present it to you because he didn't want to move the concrete.
And I think, I may be wrong, but you can come to the city manager, come to city hall and probably get the easy part of this alley cleaned up. It's city property, I guess.
So zoning is not an issue unless you're the only side not to approve. That's not filed with all that. This is more than that. The other side, the tree.
That's what we can do, Jackie. We're going to turn it over to the mayor. The hardest part, it sounds like, and most people don't know, that the buck does stop here, so we have to make a decision with this. So it sounds like your hardest part is over with, zoning. The other two, in most cases, I'm going to say almost close to 100%, the mayor and council has been very lenient in working in those areas. I think it's going to be okay. But as the manager, he has to take a look and...
And I understand that. We just told you...
I know the lot too, but I don't know if there's a problem.
He just told me to come and present it to you. I just wanted it cleared. He didn't want to move it because he was fearful that it would kill the tree. So he told me to come and free for it to the council. Okay? That's what I mean.
And I think too, Mr. Mayor, is that Jackie is trying to bring in all the little concerns that she had.
Right.
I don't think it was just, you know, her just dealing with zoning. The tree, just whatever that was concerning her area, that's what she touched on. She wanted to mention why she had it. It's basically, you didn't have to put it in the agenda.
Right.
You did the right thing.
Yeah.
And we're going to turn it over to the mayor now. We just got started. And she has an issue, planning zoning has approval 100%. And now it's up to us, and she just has some little small issues. You can catch up with that later. And that has to be me.
First off, I'll go there, please. I'm running a little late. I had some emergency come up and I had to match an unexpected trip for Landville. And I was hearing that I have an unexpected blizzard, so...
Okay, so... I'm glad you said Atlantic, but I told them Atlanta, in fact, we'd pick up another city.
Well, Atlanta. Well, Atlanta. Okay, so did it pretty much answer your questions?
Well, I just wanted to say something to you. I understand that, you know, it's time management, but he just told me to present that to the city council and see if they could assist me with removing that concrete. Like I said, it is inappropriate. It's not something that was on my lot. It was something from the previous lot that carried over to this lot. But he didn't want, yeah, you know, it's his historical site. He didn't want to do anything with the tree without the city support or anything.
We appreciate that. We do appreciate it. Contact us, go with that for the DDA. City manager, city attorney, you have an opinion on this?
Depending on how you go see what this is all about. Handle it forward or whatever. Get them to y'all.
Okay. As far as the rezoning, go if you place out on the agenda if you want to.
What's an R?
Yeah, put on the R to approve the rezoning.
Is there already?
It's already on. Yeah, it is unanimously recommended from the city. Okay. Any more comments or questions? Thank you, ma'am. We do appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate that. And we get that through with the...
You're right.
Okay, are there any others that want to speak tonight? Don't they get a chance to sign to speak tonight? Any others? I've got a few on here, so if you want to speak now. Okay. The next thing is, we already...
Did anything on the agenda?
Oh, we, oh, had a chance to look over. Hopefully had a chance to look over the agenda. Any comments or questions? Of course, we're not voting on it tonight. Any comments, questions? Good, next approval in a minute. July 16th, work session, and July 17th, record call meeting. Any comments or questions?
We need to make a motion to accept that, right?
No, we don't. No, not tonight. Thank you.
I'm glad we're here.
City manager, I'm correct, if I'm up here? Okay. Next is the business presentation. If you're here tonight, if you'd like to speak tonight, if you're stood tomorrow night, you're both welcome to. Ms. Lord Flanders. And again, I asked when you put in a request, if you have given us a little information about what all you want to do and everything, and give us the opportunity to do some research. Otherwise, it might be one of them made with to thank you for coming and put you on the next agenda and give you the answer to it. Okay, Ms. Lord Flanders?
This mayor, if I could add, to, if you've not here, I went in your bag, it's a hand drawn picture, you know, just like this.
You've already got this on hers.
The three oak lane should be one oak lane because all of those oaks have been tagged by the arborist. And really should have been down a couple of years ago. We just haven't taken them down. So we might want to reevaluate if you guys go live and look at it, but if you have blue tags, if that ever since I've been here.
We're talking about the blue tags. We have an arborist that come by when we see a problem or with the tree or we've got a question, we'll get him to come and look at it. That's his identification tag that goes on it. We keep that pitch record on.
So the blue tag, for us who don't know what this, the blue tag means, you...
Blue tag is definitely used to cut.
It's got a problem with it. He's checking it out for us.
So that means that...
Anytime you see a blue tag on a tree, there's a question about it.
Well, if there's a blue tag, what the city manager's saying is it's cut down, so there's no question.
Well, that means that he's here checking it out and everything. He'll...
They should, they should.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because it's in bad shape. Before we cut a tree down, an oak tree, even though we know it's in bad shape, unless it's an immediate danger, we get this arborist, arborist come, well, he comes in anyway, but he'll put the blue tag on it and let us know that the tree does need to come down. But if you see a tree still up with that blue tag, it means we're, he's trying everything we can to save that tree.
Say that again now, if you...
See a tree with a blue tag on it? It's already been checked out and inspected and determined that it needs to come down. If it's still up, then it means he is not... They're trying to find a way of saving the tree. We don't want to just go and say this tree is by the foot of town.
I'm glad the manager brought that up very important, that the tags are there for a while, very visible. Thousands of people see that tree, and I must admit, one of the tree committee individuals obviously did not know that. So I planted this on the tree committee. So any oak tree, far as I'm concerned, without all the troubles we can have with oak trees, any oak tree, we need to talk about it as much as we can before we cut it down.
You think it's an oak tree.
So thanks to cameraman, said the news media, let everybody know because somebody's going to complain why we cut those trees under and nobody move that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else on that? Thank you, city manager. Next is Lita Bennett, Martin, All-Word Driller. We've already had someone come and speak good and gave us good info on speaking on that, so we're all kind of love to what it's all about.
We brought it to the council three times about the drilling.
We brought it to the SBA.
I don't know how the general...
Okay, next thing is Ms. Stacy Castle. I'm just going to draw you. Derry downtown development, Derry, Florida. Come to the South Park first of all.
Does he stand up here too? Those are... She give me...
Well, a lot of us wear cross over there, so... Thank you for your time, Mr. Steve. We appreciate it. The DDA, what we're looking for is the approval to extend our annual call list to a two-day event, Saturday, Sunday event. Lot of reasons that we were, that we're looking at it. One of the big reasons, when we're looking for vendors over here, there are a lot of people that we miss out on because we aren't a two-day event. And the variety of vendors that we can get because they only attend the two-day events. One of the other things that we were looking at is just more ways that we can drop people to the area. More awareness of Derry and the more we can bring people here. It's a whole nother day for visitors to come to town to frequent our businesses in town, eat at the restaurants, buy gas, Dollar General, buy sunscreen, anything that will get people to town to spend any money more over than what we have at this point. Do you have a couple of other points?
A little bit of history. DDA's can sponsor this for a number of years. I've been involved in it personally for probably 10 years. And a few years back, the DDA asked the Lions Club of Derry to organize the event, run the event, which we've been doing as a pretty much of a community service thing. And we sounded out the Lions Club, we sounded out the DDA, and there's been the majority of both who are in favor of it because it will probably do something good to the community. We don't think that right out of the starting gate, it's going to make a huge difference, but we think over a year or two, it will make a difference. And we should be able to probably in the future get some sponsorship, get some better entertainment, maybe have a wider range of vendors, maybe a little higher quality in some cases. We just think it's an idea we'd like to try. And so we're asking for the city's approval.
The only questions that I've talked, I've heard asked around the community is, you want to do it this year, right?
Mm-hmm.
And being that it's such a short time before it actually happened, you have enough time to actually get everything together and make the go of it?
To get committed people to a two-day festival versus a one-day.
We still have a day and a half.
Questions you ask.
We feel like security.
Now, you're talking about a two-day. Are you talking about fencing it off like the blessing of fleas?
Well, they typically close the streets, that section of Broad's Scraven and First for fall fest. And what we would do is we have budgeted for overnight security in the budget to pay for security overnight to watch over the vendor stuff so they can leave it set up so that we can start right back up on Sunday morning.
Is there any charge for people to come into the...
No, so it's a free event still. Yeah, we do this. We will do our best to always make sure it's a free event.
And the other question was, you're going to need to block off three streets off two days? Possibly two out of the day before, so be what, two, three out of the day?
So they can be set up?
Yeah, set up. Well, they, I think people typically move their cars on Friday evening because it's just easier for them because it's such a early setup. And then it'll go through till four, five on Sunday. So yes, it will be set up. It will be closed off for approximately that amount.
The other question, and the last one, that was, instead of closing three streets, is there some other location like down on the waterfront, under the bridge, or maybe the fire station or somewhere like that?
We...
I like to say I'm asking questions.
DDA, I have to go...
It was supposed to benefit the businesses in the downtown area. And if we took it down to the waterfront or the firehouse, we'd probably lose that.
See, and that's the part that somebody built it on for him is asking this question because they said when something like that happens, the only one, the only business that gets any benefit is the ones right here on Broad Street and Frontal Express, not the rest of town. So they said if you bring it in the middle of town, then it would be close to everybody. And when you brought it to, they say, well, I need this. Frontal Express is closer, not a home to always freeze or dollar gone. But if it's in the middle of town, they said, we can do it twice.
I got a question.
In oriented events, I think that's probably why they have it. It's more of the best back on the pedestrian area.
The walk in here.
I got a question. You have spoken to the businesses. And the business on both street...
Three streets?
Three streets are fine with it. The majority of them...
The majority is, the majority has no problem?
My question is this, you have residents that live there. Have they been, have they been at, because for me, for me, we've always had a one-day And, you know, I think the residents there pretty much, they'll tolerate, and tolerate maybe may not be the right word, but the others who has lived there, you know, I think they should be the first ones to let be known that you're going to try to do two days and see what they think.
I honestly didn't want to move forward with talking to anyone necessarily about it until we had what the council's approval to even do it. Because I would, I would not want it to have been viewed as that I did not come to you first to be able to...
How far down Broad Street do you need to go?
It's just to the corner there.
Just to Jackson?
I have a question.
No, not Jackson, it's not even there.
It's Red.
Yeah. So do y'all intend like, like you normally would at four o'clock, to shut it all down and the streets are open again and they're going to keep their tents out there? Or are you going to try to block off Broad versus Red the whole time? That's where y'all typically set up. So are y'all going to try to open it back up since it's not fencing and y'all would have security? Or are they going to, what are they doing with their tents? I mean, I'm just questioning. That would block off the roadway, all the roadways to skippers if y'all are going to try to block it up.
And on plus parking.
Yeah, so I'm just, I mean, I'm just asking. I think it's great, but I mean, if you're going to open it back up at five and shut it back down in the morning, that might be different. But I don't think we can close it off for two, four days on those streets with access to other businesses. I mean, I might be wrong.
Well, typically during the fall fest, we don't close off this street down to skippers because it's just those three blocks and then we invest in the signs for the detours where they will come around and they turn around and come down. I'm not, I don't know the name of the street, but they come down past the...
Ponder.
And they come and they go down. So the roads to skippers will always work, as far as I know.
When the event, what would, what would think also, if everybody's coming to event park and the cars, they're blocking it that way, so...
I'm just trying to ask how you're doing. I'm, I'm, I just don't understand.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm for it, I'm going to say it upfront, but listening to council and even before I came here, of course, I heard about it, and Lions Club, where majority of the people say, yes, let's do it. And I'm of the opinion that we have not been doing hardly anything downtown that much. We got the blessing of the street, and we're always complaining about what we are doing. So you're trying.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm a crazy maverick, so if it fails, if it fails on, then you have to try something else. Then we can compromise, as Council Marcy said. Is there a way that we don't have to do it for almost three days, at night, open it up, security is there? Is there for some compromise? I think you're doing it the right way, talking to all of the leaders first that's going to work with it. Early that morning, I did it one year with Council Steen and others in line, but then taking it to the citizens, that's an important issue. Definitely not blocking the restaurants. It sounds like you're not going to do that. So we might need to have, take this, what we're saying, and take it to your next meeting, but you got, I'm for it, let's try.
What are the hours you're looking at?
Ten to five.
So you're going for the five, so nothing at even?
It usually stretches on by itself.
Don't worry.
Because if, yeah, if there's music and there's people still around, vendors will, the vendors will stay as long as the people moving about, if there's a chance they can make a sale.
Really, you don't have any hours?
Well, I can't imagine we go past, you know, six or seven because by then, everybody's scattered.
And here's another thing, being on the chamber board for six years now and being a part of blessing, when those people, those vendors that come in and they pay for their insurance and all, when they sit their face up, they know it's fenced in, they can leave whatever they want there. Like, so how are y'all going to secure them other than having our city place, which is fun, walking through? But how are you going to secure their stuff? Are you just going to leave them a spot there? Are they going to take their stuff all down every night? Like, I'm just thinking of them, if I was a vendor, I wouldn't want to leave my stuff up all night and wait for the next day. But you don't have any way to secure it if you're going to leave it open there. Do you see what I'm saying? It's not fenced in.
They have time, but they're responsible.
Right. That's what I was going to say also.
And we're, we have in the budget, we belong in the budget for security. When I went and talked to Tim about it to begin with, the city manager to begin with, we had already discussed, you know, leaving money to hire security. We would, we would certainly, you know, let the city know and as the, as the police and the city police are out controlling to take a personal look, obviously, but we did not intend to burden the city financially at all with security.
We could compromise on traffic overnight. I'd have to, I'd have to get some advice from the police department about safety, to have, you know, in the dark, people walking around and cars going through, that would be a concern to me, but there's a possibility we can work something out.
And I understand everyone's concerns, I do. I'm really just trying to do what I can and it's within my purview to do, so we appreciate that.
Especially, it's a, anytime we can bring people to showcase our city is, I mean, kudos. I mean, we, we very much need that, and I applaud you for doing that. For me, and my concern is one, the residents. That is the major concern because in that building in front of the wine shop, those condos there, there's elderly as well as, you know, different age group. But I think we need, we do need to speak with them and see what their opinion is before we go. And let them know that you're going to do this for two days. See who they're at. And I'm for it. I just want to make sure that our citizens know, you know, we're making a change today. One day is, one day is, you know, we had, we had, I remember last year, we had a great, great fall fest. I mean, we had perfect weather, we had a crowd of people, and we had a blast. And it was, it was fantastic. But I do think that we may need to look at those red, on all streets. And that's my concern.
And one thing, the roadway coming through from Main Street going to skipper, it would have to be open for emergency vehicles, which would have accidents. Or if they were setting everything up. Okay, anything else?
I got a question to them, to station, you know, like Martin was saying, Steen was saying, you said the citizens, and we know that you need to bring it to the board first before you can even go out there public with it. And you did the right thing. You're just trying to wash your teeth and bat your eyes, just to make sure. Like, to me, I'm for it, so I think it's a great idea. I think it's a try, and it's a try by error. You know, you can't try by error unless you try something.
Yeah, I agree. You don't know until you...
Right, and then, like I say, if it doesn't succeed this time, you know, just go back to the one day, you know what I'm saying? And then sometimes you can go with rainstorm, and see what you can do, what you didn't do, and then come up with another thing or whatever, but it's a good, it's a good try going forth, and like you said, once you speak to the citizens, and you're closer in the area, it's good to go.
You have your volunteers and everybody, okay?
We have it done, though.
I have to say one thing, though, speaking of, uh, this came up in June initially, this is now the twentieth of August, and, uh, before long, the decision will be made automatically.
Four months, yeah. Has the Lions Club's gonna run a car show?
Yes.
Okay.
It, the, the car club is going to have it, not the Lions Club.
Okay.
It'll be in, in Burn Square.
Okay.
Just like it usually is.
Any more comments, questions? We do appreciate, uh, you know, your, your, your experience, it's my favor for them, although it's all. Thank, thank you, asking, any, any of y'all have any questions? I'm so used to regular meetings. If I do, I should, I should do it before you can hang.
People, when Georgia law requires us to calculate a rollback rate when there's an increase in property values, and if y'all look at the top here, we've had reassessment of existing real properties, we had additional ten point four billion dollars added to the value of the city. And then that number to the right there, one point six two six million, that's, that's new thing, essentially, that's new things that have been added to the jack, nine six.
Where are you looking at that?
On the left.
During the shot, Mr. Watson.
Okay.
You'll see, uh, you can see ten million four hundred and eight thousand.
Got it.
Right beside that, we had one million six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and that, that's new constructions in the city area. And looking at that from a per se standpoint, that, that's amazing, that's enormous, amazing. So you guys, we had a digest, a real property digest that went from hundred and five million to a hundred and seventeen million dollars. I mean, that's a lot of growth.
That's great, that actually is great.
So we're required by law to calculate some, uh, what's called rollback rate. And essentially, what the legislature did there is they don't want, um, you just have the county or any other taxing authority to benefit simply from, uh, inflation-based growth. Uh, not the new growth, now, not the one point six, that's not calculated in, but that inflation-based growth, I mean, what we've had is a lot of property selling around here, just reapraising people's houses, and I mean, mine went up, my, my value on my house went up, I got it, and you know, I couldn't really argue with it, I mean, it was a fair value, so I mean, I, I think they're doing a great job, with the assessments office, Keith Fane's office, Keith and his staff have done a great job, but what did we, we calculated the rollback military rate, it's three point four eight three. That's a reduction of about nine percent of military. Uh, and as Mr. Sweets said, through some sound financial management, I think his recommendation is going to be a doctor of that. I think from a budgetary standpoint, uh, we're still in great shape. There, there, we have a, a five-year history here, there is a, this was the one right before the nine one ten, we had a lot of confusion, but in fact, but we'll have a light one in the back of tomorrow night, and newspaper has to correct. Uh, she confirmed back on Janice's email, you do have the correct one.
We said it Friday, I think.
That's, that's correct, that was the final, final one. And she confirmed it with me, and that was right. So it's, uh, we're dropping the military at, from three point eight to three point four eight three, and that's from a lot of hard work, and those hours you spend in the budget retreat, uh, and, and perusing over this stuff, this is why we do it, it all pays off.
Council, this is where the road leads the road, I mean, we're seeing some sound economic growth in this, in this city area. It's gonna be attractive to everyone.
I appreciate everybody for all the work on it.
I'll tell you a little bit on that, uh, now and hopefully tomorrow, also, this is monumental, when we talk about cities and being able to, to roll back in the growth. And most of us that were in this city, I call it in a bumper verse, I love living here. I lost a lot of money, uh, because it was booming, everybody was buying everything. And we went from one bike to, I think, three bikes, almost overnight. And to live through that, and then to see what happened, and now we're back in the bounce again, on, on the upward, and to see what, uh, we're recommended to do, keep in mind, this council, citizens need here, uh, as I think Abraham Lincoln said, with the awesome power, we have that kind of power, but we can raise the ministry if we choose to. But we are not thinking about that, but we do have the power to do it. We're going to drop it down, put the monies in the citizen pocket. That's what we're trying to do with the water, with the new meters, and the other things that we're doing, so this is monumental, I'd like to ask the manager, because, because Sarah's not here, Taylor? Uh, Taylor's here. Okay, all right.
How could you?
That's an inside, not joke, I was like, wait, wait, Wednesday, all right, she is here, and you all explained that late, all right. But let Taylor's reverse, good with these things, I'd like to church the records, and find out when have we ever had a ministry rate drop that significant? And when have we ever had an increase of one, what's that, hundred and five mil to two hundred and seventy?
Hundred and seventeen.
So you find that out, and let us know, if you can't find it by tomorrow, next two months.
If I remember correctly, it was like two thousand and seven, when I saw it all back, I just listed in the record, how much, how much the amount was.
Eleven years, eleven years, that's, that's nice.
Okay.
But I'll be glad to, to let it pop.
And what Mr. Watson was alluding to is, we started from the ground up, and that is, is number one, you got your financial house in order with the budget. Number two, you haven't overstepped your bounds financially. Yes, like Mr. Watson said, you can do whatever you want to do, but it doesn't make sense, we did that.
That's true.
Third thing is, is you're also laying the groundwork as far as infrastructure, such as the water meters, such as the wastewater treatment plant. There is no way that we can fail as a group. It is absolutely working the way it should, the council is working the way it should, and look what you're able to deliver to the folks that voted for you, and my, my extension, keep here.
Good job.
You got all your, all your arguing and debating at the same time, it pays off.
We can argue, but.
He got a little warmer here. I got a little warmer, look.
Oh, come on, Mary.
All of this just to show that we do have the heart of citizens.
I'm serious.
Our, our discernment of citizens, the heart, we are striving for the best for everyone in general, not just for us, to make us a little bit, I appreciate it. Anybody have anything else? About everybody being tomorrow? We'll be in the journey. Wait, you got something? Is there any other? I thought I saw somebody do that. Joe, was this Charlie Kim?